Welcome to this special edition of Go Vote Omaha. This is a candidate forum for the Millard School Board, Board of Education Number 17, presented by the League of Women Voters of Greater Omaha. I'm Jerry Simon, a League member and moderator for the forum. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes parties or candidates. We present the forum solely for voter education. Here's the format for our forum this evening. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement. We'll follow that with questions and answers. Each candidate will answer every question and will have up to 90 seconds to answer a question. Questions will be either prepared by the League of Women Voters or called in by our viewers, and we do hope you will call in questions. The number is on your screen. Following our question and the answer period, we'll have a one-minute closing statement by each candidate. A timekeeper will alert the candidates when 30 seconds of time remains and when to stop speaking. Before the forum this evening, our candidates drew lots to determine their initial speaking order, and I'll introduce them to you in that order now. There are six candidates running for three open seats on the Millard School Board, and there are four of them with us this evening. They are Amber D. Parker, Mike Pate, Amanda McGill-Johnson, and Linda Poole. And we'll begin with our opening statements, beginning with Amber D. Parker.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum this evening, and also for KPAO Studios and their efforts as well in making this happen. My name is Amber, and I am running for the Millard School Board because I believe in giving back to the community. I went through the public school system in Lincoln, and because of teachers and my parents and working together, it helped build my future success. And I believe that's important, to give back to our future generations. I'm an advocate to fight against Planned Parenthood and also the Common Core. I believe in, we want our students to have the best education and the best focus in the foundation in making that happen.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the League for sponsoring this forum tonight. It's very important to educate our public on the issues that matter to them most, and education being the forefront of most concerns that parents and our constituents have. I have been on the board. This is my, I'm serving my fifth term. I'm seeking my sixth term on the school board. Experience does matter when we're talking about issues in education. We've had a great deal of accomplishments over the 20 years that I've been on the school board, including several bond issues that have passed, and the fact that we have become one of the premier school districts, not only in the state but in the region as well over that 20 years. Managing a budget of over $200 million takes leadership as well, and having a business background, that gives me the experience to manage over a $200 million general fund budget as well. And I'm proud of the fact that we are the third lowest spending school district in the entire state, and we're very fiscally responsible and get some of the best student achievement results as well. So I thank the League again, and I appreciate your confidence in vote.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Thanks. I would also like to thank the League and for all of you who are taking the time to watch this and educate yourself on this race. A little bit about myself. I work for the Nebraska Children's Home Society, which is a nonprofit that works on children's issues and programming from adoption and foster care to parenting classes and teen pregnancy prevention. I am a 1998 graduate of Millard North High School, and one of my proudest moments was being inducted into their Hall of Fame last year. I got that honor primarily because I served two terms in the Nebraska Legislature where I worked on a variety of educational and children's issues, which hopefully I'll be able to share a little bit about tonight during this panel. You know, I had the opportunity to move back home to Omaha about a year and a half ago, and I knew when I was making that move that I wanted to be back in the Millard School District. I had such a rich experience. I know it's one of the best school districts out there that a family could ever want. And so I made sure to move back into Millard, and last February, when I saw there was an opening on the board, I thought, what a better way to really take part and give back to the community.
Thank you. Linda Poole.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum tonight, and thank you for all those who are watching as well. I have been on the Millard Board of Education for the past 20 years, and I believe that I bring a unique perspective to the school board. As I was a student in the district, I was in the first graduating class of Millard North, and then I went on to teach in Millard. I was PTO president at a Millard Elementary School for a couple of years, and now I've served on the school board for the last 20 years. So I believe that gives me a unique perspective in that I'm able to see things from all different lenses. Besides just being involved on the local board, I've also served on the State School Boards Association for 18 years. I've been one of the directors on the National School Boards Association, and I've also been appointed by the governor to serve on the Technical Advisory Committee for statewide assessment since its inception. So I'm able to bring a wide variety of perspectives. And another thing is I currently am a teacher in the Papillion-Lavista School District as well.
Thank you. Now, our first question, and we'll begin with Mike Pate on this one. Millard recently dealt with a blackout or blackface incident at one of its high school's football games with North High, where over 44% of students are African-American compared to just over 4% at the Millard School. As a result, such face painting has been banned. Was that the right decision, and does Millard need to do more about teaching students about racism and race relations?
Thank you. Yes, I think the answer to that question is, we do need to educate our student body a little bit more. The world has changed. I think that the decision to ban full-body paint, face paint particularly, is the right decision today. It's very, very important that we respect everybody, and I'm sure that the students that were doing, did what they were doing meant no offense, but in the same respect, they should have been cognizant of what they were doing. So I think the administration did a very good job of addressing the issue, communicated and articulated and very well with the Omaha Public Schools as well, because we're playing a Omaha Public School football team. I think they did a very good job of reaching out to the Omaha Public School Administration to make sure that they address the issues with them, and I feel confident that, from the information that I received, that both Omaha Public Schools Administration as well as our administration are satisfied with the response that we have made in reaction to that particular event. I also think that it's time that we, we take the time to educate our student body, to make sure that they understand what this is all about, because if they meant no ill-will and did not intend for any negative publicity out of this, they still need to be educated as to what some people might be thinking about that.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Yeah, I have to agree with Mike. You know, I think the administration handled it in the right way. I know 20 years ago, that's been a long time already since I'd been in high school, but at the time, seniors, the color was black. You'd have a senior pride day when you go to the football game, and I remember a friend of mine showing up with all blackface paint on, and an administrator found him and immediately asked him to wash his face. And I know for young people who don't maybe have that full understanding of the cultural impact, it might seem innocent, but this is really a learning experience to help young people understand cultural competency and ways that things can be taken differently by different cultures, and it's important to be sensitive and important to have strong anti-bullying policies and to be aware of the greater world outside of your own. And so I think administrators took the right courses of action and would hope to see continued follow-through on that.
Thank you. Linda Poole.
I also believe that our administration handled this in the proper, the proper manner. As soon as we were notified about this, about the Facebook post, I know that Mr. Begley as well as our superintendent both reached out to the superintendent in OPS and the administration at Omaha North and explained to them that no ill-will was meant by this, that it was just all, it was just a past tradition that had happened. However, I do agree that we do need to do a better job of educating our student body. That did start, actually, the very next day when Millard South then played Millard West at the football game that on Friday night, there was a student that came with their face painted, and our administration stepped in and told them that they would not be allowed into the game until they went out and took off their face paint. So I believe they are handling this appropriately, and they are following through. As well as educating our student body about the implications, we also need to make sure that we have our staff trained at football games as to what the expectations are and things like that as well. However, being at a lot of those football games, it's really hard if a student would come into the game and they possibly could not have face paint on, and they could be sitting in the stands and doing it at that time as well. So being vigilant and making sure we're walking through this stadium and things like that to make sure that, once they're in the facility, that they don't face paint as well. But it was handled correctly in my mind.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Yes, I would have to say that it's very important that we are sensitive, and mentor once told me, always know the surroundings and to the season in which you would speak. And we are definitely in times where offense can be taken easily or miscommunication, and I think that's really important for, on whatever side anyone would be on if they were offended or someone wasn't offended and just upholding tradition. So I do think that that was very important in addressing and communicating on the administration's side. As far as all the details surrounding this, that I cannot speak into. I'm not on the board yet, but I would say that it is important that we do take sensitivity for every student in looking at both sides, because we don't want any students to be bullied or feel inferior in areas of where they don't matter, because that's not the case. Every student does matter.
Thank you. Here's our next question. Who makes the textbook selections for schools? Are any changes needed? And we'll begin with Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Well, from what I understand, not being on the board yet, that is something that a board has final approval on, and that administration and others take the, excuse me, take those initial first steps and recommendations. The board then has time to look over those textbooks, and Linda and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. Again, I haven't served yet, so I don't know all the nitty-gritty, but that's my understanding of the process, and as always, it's important to make sure that you're doing your due diligence when making those selections, so that our children are getting the best education they can possibly have.
Thank you. Linda Poole.
Thank you. When it comes down to textbook selection, I believe that that decision is best made with those people who are closest to it, which would be the teachers and the administrators. We need to remember that a school board member's main responsibility is that we are the policymakers of the district. We are not the people that are in the classroom every day, and so we should leave the decisions of textbook adoption basically to the teachers and to the administrators. Of course, the board has a role in that we fund the textbook, and we're in charge of the budget, or we're in charge of the process for funding textbooks because we approve the budget. And so, for instance, some of the textbooks do come to, well, they all come to us for approval, but we don't necessarily sit down and go through all of the textbooks. There is a curriculum adoption process that is adopted by our district, and the board sets up different parameters and things to look at, and it comes to us, and as long as it meets our state and our local standards, then it's up to the teachers and administrators to go ahead and to suggest which textbook.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Thank you. I would have to say that I do agree that it is important that we have a teacher's perspective as it is the heartbeat of the teachers in their classrooms and the personalization of knowing their students' individuality and how their students best learn things and looking from the past of what their success. What I would tie together with that, however, is in living in a constitutional republic with a democratic process here in the United States of America, just as each one of us here are in this Millard School Board election, so do I believe that there should be a vote in the teachers that are choosing these curriculums. And furthermore, we need to know the foundation of these curriculums, because it's not just a teacher's opinion, and the more people and public that we have in parents transparency and accountability in these areas, I believe will be better for the Millard community in general.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you very much. Textbook adoption is one of those areas that I believe really resides with the administration of the school district, with the board obviously overseeing the decisions that are made. I think Millard has had a long record of success in regards to student achievement. We have adopted many textbooks over the years in my tenure and 20 years of service on the board, and I think the voters, when they're looking at textbook adoption, they're going to look to us as saying, what are we getting as a return on our investment? And that return is really student academic achievement. And when we adopt textbooks, we want to make sure that we're adopting textbooks that are relevant to the course and the outcomes that that course we're trying to achieve, those students are trying to achieve, and our experts are on that, are our curriculum director and our administration in the school district and in the buildings as well. And as Mrs. Poole had stated, that decision is made with a committee of several people that review the textbook, and we have a textbook adoption, Millard has a textbook adoption policy that is reviewed and reviewed again to make sure that it is relevant and relevant and reliable data as well, so that the students are learning exactly what they should be learning. And again, I'm going to go back to the track record in Millard in student achievement and just take a look over the years, the success that we've had in student achievement and being one of the highest achieving school districts in the state, and I think our textbooks have been very, very relevant.
Thank you. Here's our next question. I drive by Millard North High School every day and would be impressed by the new Taj Mahal entrance if I didn't realize all the teachers and supplies which could be paid for by the money used for that cosmetic improvement. What are your priorities for spending education funds? And we'll begin with Linda Poole.
Thank you. You know, I think one of the things that we need to remember in that is something that Mike stated earlier and that I'll reiterate, is that Millard offers a world-class education for our students as one of the lowest per pupil costs in the state. We are the third lowest in the state. We educate our students for roughly $9,465, and the state average is $11,365, so almost $2,000 less than what the state averaged. So I think that tells you that the Millard School Board has been very fiscally responsible with our money. The improvements at Millard North, Millard North, I think you have to remember, was built as a 910 building. I went there as a freshman and sophomore, and then in 1982, it became a four-year high school. And so it was added on, and the building was basically built in two separate parts. It was not safe. Students would have to travel outside to get from one wing of the building to the other. So a lot of the improvements that are done there at Millard North were done for safety and security issues. When we were looking at the bond issue and we asked our patrons what was one of the most important things to them, safety and security was one of those things. And so that is one of the main things that we did to Millard North was to make it a safe and secure environment. Of course, any money that we spend in Millard, we always want to make sure that we spend, put the focus of our money into the classroom and make sure that it has to do with student achievement, and that's what we feel like we did at Millard North.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
I would have to say, in all honesty, not knowing a lot of this question, but I think, I'm thankful the person called in to ask. So I'll speak from what I do know, and one of the goals as running as a candidate for the Millard School Board is I believe we need to eliminate waste and be more efficient in our spending. Just as we want to respect students and teachers, so do we want to respect the taxpayers and do the best that we can to be community builders in those areas. We want to make sure that, of course, our structures are safe, excuse me, safety is greatly important to every student and teacher in the Millard Public School area. However, at the same time, I think there are things that we should look at further as a district, and we should always aim to do better in seeing what we could spend less and have, again, the focus in continuing to be one of the best in the state in our education system.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you very much. The question was an interesting question and how it was phrased, the Taj Mahal. I don't look at it as a Taj Mahal, and I'm quite honestly, I'm not going to apologize for the money that was spent in that building. That building, as Linda had stated, had deep needs of improvement, particularly in the area of security and overcrowding. And when that happens, we need to maintain our facilities to make sure that our students are educated properly and have the surroundings in order to do that. One of the worst things I think we can do to the general public, quite honestly, is let our buildings go in various areas of disrepair and not invest the money to keep the property up. We've got almost three-quarters of a billion dollars invested in real estate, and we've got to maintain those facilities. And from time to time, it takes an upgrade or renovations of the facilities to make sure that they're relevant in today's world. And Millard North is just an example of that. We've passed many, many bond issues over the years and been very, very good stewards of the taxpayers' monies, and quite honestly, every single time, I believe that we've had a budget issue, a budget for a construction budget, we've always come under budget as well. So the properties are managed well. We're not wasting any money. As regard, in regards to where we want to spend our dollars, facilities is one part of that, but we also need to make sure that we focus on education and learning. And the fact of the matter is, we've lost $7 million in state aid over the past several years because of the aid adjustments that we lost from the state legislature, and we have done very, very well. We've made cuts in programs where we didn't necessarily want to make cuts. We've done some very good diligent areas of budget management, and I think we've been very, very good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
I'd certainly reiterate that I believe the board's been incredibly fiscally responsible, and the deal that Millard residents get for their education is remarkable, actually. Having gone to school at Millard North, I can tell you how difficult it was to get from one side of that structure to the other. If you were on, had a class on the second floor of one side and needed to get to the second floor of the other, it's virtually impossible. I don't know how anyone with a handicap was ever able to do it. You almost had to go outside to get from the extreme side of the building to the other, and in this day and age, we just can't risk the security factors of having kids going outside. And so I would definitely argue that it wasn't just a cosmetic improvement, but one that was necessary for that building and for the students.
Thank you. Here's our next question from a viewer. I'd like to hear more thoughts on bullying. How much should the school board involve itself in policies on bullying? And we'll begin with Amber D. Parker.
Yes, that's a great question. I believe that there, no student nor teacher should ever be bullied. And personally speaking, I've been bullied, and I've been cyberbullied, and it's not a good feeling. I believe that the Millard School Board and how those types of things that we should address is not tolerating that type of bullying. However, when I say bullying, I believe that different people have different terminologies of what that means to them. I watched a wonderful video, a video of a student, and it was about this young girl who, these girls had something against her and created fabrication, just a bunch of lies, and slandered her name. And anyhow, in tying this together, in the end, it was how badly it had damaged her, and they were trying to bully her into silence, and she finally had taken enough and decided, I need to speak up. And she made a video for the rest of the school to see, to stand up and confront those giants. And I really think that, when I watched that video, it really encouraged me that we need to stand up and we need to speak out against that. But bullying doesn't only come on towards students. We live in a day and age too where teachers are being bullied as well, and I believe it's the administration's job that we create a safe environment for all, but when I say safe, I mean upholding the Constitution and also respecting religious liberties as well.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you. This is, this is a particular subject that I've got extreme amount of interest in, as Mrs. Poole will attest to. This is, this is a crusade that I've been on for several years because I recognize the fact that there is a great deal of bullying that has been going on. It's increasing, and it takes all forms as well. And we need to do what we can do. We can't control the external environment. We can certainly control the internal environment as much as we possibly can. So there's a great deal of education that needs to occur with regards to bullying and anti-bullying measures. I think one of the greatest concerns a parent should have today is what is being, what is considered bullying. It's not name-calling so much anymore as it is all other forms of bullying, and cyberbullying is one of the greatest concerns that I've got, because you're behind a hidden wall, if you will, and this device that you've got, and you can say anything to anybody at any time, and they think that it's okay to do that. Well, when you take a look at the history of that and some of the, some of the issues that have been risen, arisen out of that, there's been a great deal of harm to students and to others as well that has been done through social media channels and through their mobile devices. So I think if we can do anything, what we can do as a school board is encourage parents to be educated, perhaps educational forums ourselves, sponsor educational forums ourselves, so they understand, the parents understand, the dangers of bullying, and bullying can, like I said, take form of any type of form, not just name-calling and the like. So I would really encourage everybody to get very, very active in this area of anti-bullying and help back us up on measures that we need to take.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Certainly, social media has just taken bullying to a completely new level. When a kid goes home from school, that problem doesn't just stay at school. It follows them home when they're checking their phones and looking at their Facebook and Twitter feeds and Instagram. In the legislature, I was able to pass a bill that required all teachers now to get suicide prevention training, because suicide is one of the leading causes of death for our young people who are school-aged. And, you know, teachers spend so much time around our students that it's important that they have the capacity or have that opportunity to learn what those signs are for when those cases arise, where that bullying really is going to push a young person over the edge. I think we can always work to be better at teaching our young people coping skills in general. You know, as school has evolved and budgets get tighter, we haven't maybe had all the opportunities we'd like to really teach those sorts of skills anymore, and I think it's important, as these troubling issues and social media isn't going to go anywhere, you know, to do everything we can to try to incorporate those coping skills back into what we're teaching our young people.
Thank you. Linda Poole.
Thank you. As Mike and Amanda both said, the world is definitely changing, and social media has had a huge impact on that. What happens, sometimes a lot of the bullying will happen even outside of schools, maybe in the neighborhood or around in the community, but the kids then bring that to school, and it definitely affects their learning. So we have to make sure that as a school board, that we have policies that are in place that address that. Not that we can really stop things that happen outside of schools, but we need to find ways to address it when it affects student learning inside of schools. As a district, we've taken steps to do, you know, all that we can to go ahead and stop bullying. We do have some hotlines that kids can call into anonymously, and they can leave, you know, messages, whether it be, you know, kids of possible, like, who've been bullied and maybe be worried about suicide, things like that. Our counselors that are in our high schools and our elementary schools and our middle schools, they deal with that as well. You know, the demands on our student body is just, is changing, and kids today have so many more pressures that I didn't have when I was in school, and we just need to make sure that we do everything we possibly can to make sure that all kids have all the resources they need, not only academically, but also emotionally and socially, socially to be able to do the best that they can in schools and to increase their achievement levels.
Thank you. A viewer asks, I was dismayed when moving from another state where my daughter's school was very racially diverse to Millard West where she attended Millard West High School. How can the school district increase diversity? And we'll start with Mike Pate.
Thank you. I don't know that a school district can increase diversity unless we go back to the practices of busing and integration back in the '70s, and I don't know that that is something anybody in the community would want to do, no matter where you live. The housing patterns are housing patterns in Omaha, and Millard has actually become a very diverse community. We just, in May, we just had a tremendous graduation ceremony, and it, and it was evident that the racial and just diversity of our student body has increased tremendously over the last 20 years that I've been on the school district. I don't know that the school district itself can do anything to promote diversity in the school district, per se. It's just a matter of where people want to live and where they want to go to school. The fact of the matter is, if anybody wants to attend one of our Millard schools to get a quality education, they can do that, and they can do that through the open enrollment process, which will soon be the option enrollment process after the first of this year, which is basically the same thing. So they can attend a Millard school if they so choose to do so. And a lot of, Millard is one of the largest influxes of option enrollment and open enrollment students in the metro area, and I think that's because of our academic achievement and our results.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Yeah, this is a difficult one in terms of what the school district can do. People get to choose where they live. Perhaps there could be more affordable housing in the area, but again, that's not something the school district really has any authority over. I can say that there are parts of the district that are becoming more and more diverse. Certainly, it's more diverse than when I went to school there. I have had the chance to go observe some of the speech teams, and they are much more diverse than 20 years ago. And I even have a friend who And I even have a friend who chose Sandoz Elementary for her family over private school or other options. They chose to live there because of the diversity in that particular school. And so, you know, it depends on the part of Millard, perhaps. But there isn't a whole lot that the school district can really do to really change where people are choosing to live.
Thank you. Lynda Poole.
I agree with that as well. When it comes to diversity in the schools, people buy their houses, where they buy their houses, and it's normally because of their schools. And they usually like to go to their neighborhood schools. Millard is open to open or to option and open enrollment, open enrollment students, like Mr. Pate suggested or said. And so any student who would like to come to Millard is able to do that. But in terms of us being able to, you know, we don't necessarily go up and pick, pick up students and deliver them to our school. So they, they need to be able to go ahead and get there. Diversity is nice, of course, but as, as a board, there's really not anything that we can do there. I agree with Amanda that, you know, if the housing authority went ahead and, or Housing Department went and put more houses that would attract more diverse people in our, in our neighborhoods, we could do that. But it all comes down to housing patterns. It all comes down to people build where they build and they, they live where they want to live. And, you know, we welcome diversity. We, we would love to have a more diverse student body. But, you know, that, the school board has no control over that.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Sure. I love diversity. I would say that I think in this day and age we live in, that there's so much focus on race that it actually at times brings division into our communities. I mean, there are students that have friends that are of all ethnicities, and that's awesome. But would you ever tell a student, "Well, you only have two, you know, friends who are of, of Asian ethnicity or another ethnicity, and you need, you need to make sure, and you need to racially profile and make sure that you add some friends that are of different ethnicities." I look at the heart of a person. I look at, you know, the, the common factors we have. And what we have is, we all want what's best for our students. And I think that, I just think there's just an overplaying of, of the race. And I believe that we should encourage our students to be friends and to look at everybody with great respect. And so in regards to going under the umbrella of what this Millard School Board or administration has the ability to do in that area is, is not, is not much. But we can encourage and at least have a welcoming and a hospitality of an inviting atmosphere in our district, in our community, and reach out that way. But I don't say to focus on, on such a race-driven, but to enjoy people in general.
Thank you. Here's our next question. "What should Millard be doing about strategic planning for the district?" And we'll begin with Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Well, certainly, I, I know the board has struggled with some of the budgetary issues that they faced due to some of the cuts coming from the state. And, and the district itself is, is becoming more landlocked, so there isn't that growth in, in property value and extra funding coming in. And so, you know, as the board has been doing over the last couple of years, they've really strategically been looking at where, looking at that cost-benefit analysis of where appropriate cuts can be made. And, you know, I, I see that that will probably, most likely continue to be a struggle. And so strategic planning around how to make sure that we really maintain the high level of services, both meeting the needs of, of a growing population of youth who are more at risk on, who have, need free and reduced lunch, as well as maintaining that programming for gifted students, those who are ready to take those AP classes and work ahead of the game and getting college credits, making sure we're meeting the needs of all of those students. So continuing to really look at the budget, continuing to look at where those growing needs might be in a very strategic way.
Thank you. Lynda Poole.
I'm so glad you asked that question, because strategic planning is at the heart of our school district. We have been, we do it very, very well. We have been doing it for close to 30 years. We have been asked to present not only at the state level, but also at the national level, and have been featured in the National School Board's publication about one of the top strategic planning school districts in the country a few years ago. So we do it very, very well, and we take it very, very seriously. When we do our strategic planning, we have students, we have parents, we have teachers, we have administrators, we have board members, we have business partners, we have a group of probably about 40 people at the district level who sit down and we talk about our threats and our opportunities for our school district. And we do this over a two-day process. The board's always very, is very involved, but at the same time, the board is just one member. And we, we do not, we have the same weight as the students do. And we like to hear a variety of perspectives as to what our community really needs. We go, then we go ahead and we set our, the things that we would like to engage in, the things that we want to address. And then we go through a very rigorous program-based budgeting process, where again, we pull in community members, we pull in students, we pull in administrators, and we talk about what programs should be funded. And so we don't take it lightly. Strategic planning is something that we take very seriously, and I believe we do very, very well. And it's at the forefront of everything we do in the Millard Public Schools.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Yes, on strategic planning, I believe that the foundation is very important in how you build a foundation, because that foundation is your core. And I would have to say that the Millard Public Schools has been an example to many schools within the state. And I would like to see that continue. I do believe that we need to be aware of some of the trends that we're seeing. A lot of digital media being pushed regards to students having most of their curriculums or, or assignments on computers. I think that's something, I'm definitely against having all the assignments and curriculums on computers in those areas. I believe that we lose a lack of transparency and accountability and for the parents to review those materials. I believe that strategy should always be transparency and accountability on a school board, to realize that those children are entrusted to the Millard District, but they belong to the parents, they belong to the guardians. I believe that we do need to work together as a community in addressing the issues that we see taking place of students and listening to their voices. I do believe that there are times, so much of a political agenda, that's more of an emphasis to push on students and recruitment, that there are times where we're not hearing their voices and their needs, nor the teachers crying out and saying, "I feel at times I'm only teaching my children to teach them to take a test versus teaching them to educate them for their future." And that must stop. And we, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you, yes. I believe the, the question on strategic planning is an important one, and very, very important one, and is one that has been the core of what we've been doing in Millard for many, many years, as Mrs. Poole had indicated. Strategic planning is one of those things that, some people think it's a buzzword, some people think, you know, you just go through the motions and you put words on a piece of paper, and you know, you put it on a shelf, and you put it away and don't worry about it. That's not what we do in Millard. That's not what we've ever done in Millard. It's a living, breathing document that guides our direction in what we do and has really driven our, our success. Because there's been a lot of forethought to it, there's been a lot of input with that. We get community members' input, we get students' input on this as well. So it's one of those documents that we don't put it on a shelf and just say, "Okay, we've got it, we did it, and let's just move on with business." This is something that we review all the time, make sure that it's relevant for today's, today's world, that the content is relevant, that we're addressing the issues, such as cyberbullying, which is one of our parameters in there as well. But it's a living, breathing document and one that we, we will never abandon in the Millard Public School District. It's very, very important to us. And when you take a look at it, it consists of a lot of different parts. Our mission is very, very important and very important. Those words in the mission were chosen very, very carefully and are very, very important to us, as are the beliefs and the parameters and, of course, the strategic objectives that drive the decisions that ultimately make up the strategic plan. And that's done with community-wide input as well. So it's been very, very good for Millard, and I'm proud of the fact that we've done such a good job, and we should be a model for the rest of the state to follow.
Thank you. Here's the next question. "My granddaughter attends a Millard Elementary School in the second grade. I was shocked to learn that she was in a class of 26 students. I always thought the second grade was key to introducing and reinforcing reading skills. Shouldn't student-teacher ratios be kept way down in the first several grades of school?" And we'll begin with Lynda Poole.
Okay. Great question. When you're talking about class size and, and, and schools, unfortunately, kids don't come in packages of 25 or in packages of 20 for a class. And so it's always hard for our human resources department, when they are staffing schools, do you know, if you have 52 kids, is it best to do two classes of 26? Or do you do three classes of 17? And, you know, and I think it comes down to needing to be fiscally responsible at the same time. And with the budget cuts, and like Mr. Pate alluded to earlier, we lost over $7 million a few years ago because of some adjustments in the state aid formula, and that impacted us substantially. However, I can say that there is no research, or the research does prove, that in order to make a big difference in, in achievement levels for low class size, that it has to be down around, in the elementary levels, like down below 13, 14. And so is that really, I don't know if we would ask our community members if that is where, if they would say that would be fiscally responsible. So that makes it a little bit tough. In some of those schools where we do have larger class sizes, like in that second grade that's at 26, you know, the, at times we put in more paris support, we put additional support in for teachers to give them an extra set of hands. And so there might be an adult in there for part of the time as well, another adult to help.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Yes, I would say that, that's a great question, and thank you for calling in. Every parent is going to want their child to have the best education, and some students require more hands on and teacher instruction than some other students do. And this is something that we need to consider. I would like to go further into that question as when we look at, when we get refugee families that will be coming into our area. That's something that we need to look at, because those classes will continue to grow. And these are all factors that we have to sit around the table and look at and say, "What can we do to continue to be the great school district that's really being a great example in our state to other school districts as well, but making sure that we're not taking away from the students that are in our schools? And making sure that we have the proper boundaries, the proper teaching and, and listening, listening ears to teachers in their classrooms and when, when classes are full? And creating more of those conversations." And I'm great, I'm, I know that the Millard School Board would listen to that, and I only hope that those teachers would come forward to address those issues as well, because they, we wouldn't know about it unless those people come forward. And I believe this will build a stronger community as well and a bigger picture in problem-solving in the future.
Thank you. Mike Pate.
Thank you, yes. The answer to the question, I believe, is yes. The student-teacher ratio should be lowered. We have increased our class sizes over the years, not because we have done so intentionally, it's been because of budget cuts that we've had. And when you take a look, Millard's still growing by an average of 200 to 250, maybe even more than that in some years, students a year, which when you stop and think about it, is almost the size of a full elementary school. When you're growing still and you're getting budget cuts, you still need capital in order, what I call capital, which are resources, in order to, to facilitate that growth. And when we face the budget cuts that we faced over the years and trying to manage the resources, less resources than we've had in a growing school district is difficult to do. Losing $7 million doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it is. Those are bodies. 85% of our budget is personnel related in some way, shape, or form. So what we've had to do is make some very, very difficult decisions, and, and through attrition, not through reduction in force, but through attrition, unfortunately, just increase the class sizes and hire a few fewer teachers. Now, we hope to see that, it's a hope that that change, that trend will change at some point in time. But the fact of the matter is, we have managed very, very well. And the fact is, we've increased our budget on an average of 1.2% over the last five years. When you stop and think about a $250 million general fund budget, that's pretty good funds management.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Yeah, it certainly sounds like we all agree that we want to keep that class size as low as possible. I mean, it's the best practice, it has the best outcomes. The board's been doing the best they can, it sounds like, to, to look at their options and deal with these budget cuts. But obviously, we need to do everything we can to keep those cuts out of the classroom. Like Mrs. Poole said, we don't have a lot of control of how many kids are coming into an elementary school. I know there are some parts of Millard where they struggle to fill, you know, have, have, fill those elementary schools, just based on where there are the most young children and where families are aging, and there aren't as many young children. And so I certainly support any efforts to try to keep those cuts out of those classrooms, especially those that we are seeing more English language learners or other needs. You know, we need to make sure we're, we're paying the proper amounts of attention to those kids who need that extra, extra help. Maybe that is through more paras or other adult support, but we just need to keep doing what we can to keep those class sizes down.
Thank you. This will be our last question. "Do parents have a role in determining curriculum, and what should that role be?" We'll begin with Amber D. Parker.
Yes, absolutely. Because this is curriculum that is teaching their children. And that curriculum is going to be educating them, and I believe that the parents should have a vote in the process. I don't believe it should just go through the teachers or the Millard School Board. Then I believe we're losing an area of transparency with the curriculum and with the parents. It's always better to include the parents as these children, their, their children. And parents have parental rights. I think it's important, too, at the same time, though, as we're working together in these areas, that we see the importance, again, in community building and working together to do the best for the students. Not everybody is going to agree on things, but we do know in the state of Nebraska that our curriculums are to abide by the Americanism statutes. I, I do question, there was a recent adoption in the Millard School Board of some material that is aligned with United Nations 17 Sustainable Development Goals. And I know that we had great people looking at things, but there, after the votes had came through, there was definitely concern about Pearson and the Foundation and what they have taught in other textbooks and just the respect for the Americanism statutes. And I believe that's greatly important. Thank you.
Mike Pate.
Thank you very much. Parents should certainly have a voice in everything that we do in the Millard School District. We are a public entity, and we are responsible to the taxpayers and the students that we serve. So by all means, parents should have a voice. Should they be involved in the decision-making? No. That should be left up to the professionals. We hire professionals, they're well-paid, they're very well-trained in this area. And again, I'm going to go back to my previous statement. We've got some very, very good administrators in the area of curriculum development that understand what our curriculum is about, making sure that it's aligned properly, that it's valid, that it's reliable, and that the content is, 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 is good. And so we've done that for many, many years. And I'm going to go back to Millard's success. Our student achievement in all national norm tests and state norm tests has been above or at or above state and national levels for many, many years, all the years that I've been on the school board. And that's not done by accident. That's a, that's a, that's a factor of curriculum development and what we have done in Millard to make sure that what we have, what we have, what we're teaching is what kids are learning and how effective teaching practices come into play with that. So parents certainly should have a voice, but the decision should be made up to the, to the, to the administrators and the experts in that area. I don't want to micromanage, that's not our role, we're policymakers. Parents are a voice, as are the students a voice, but by all means, we need that, need to leave that decision up to the professionals that we hired to do that.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Well, I do see it as a collaborative process in many ways. Parents should have that input, as teachers should have input. They're on the front lines and seeing, you know, what students are like on a day-to-day basis, what they're processing, how, how curriculum is working or not. The administration and the folks who are experts in curriculum development, obviously, I mean, there are, looking at schools across the country that have best practices and are showing great results, looking at what we can learn from all of that research when developing that curriculum. You know, again, it's important to get that parent input, but they're not always aware of all the research and, and best practices out there. And so working in collaboration, but really trusting our folks to, our professionals to go in and discover what are the best curriculum out there right now, making sure that it's as evidence-based as possible with, with good outcomes, if it has been used elsewhere, to make sure that our, our students are getting that best possible education right now.
Thank you. Lynda Poole.
I too agree that parents should have, they should have the right to speak about curriculum. We allow time at our, at our board meetings to speak at the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the, of the agenda for the public to come and comment. However, and parents also have the right to opt out of, opt their children out of curriculum if they don't want them curriculum if they don't want them to be involved in it as well. However, the selection of curriculum and determining what the curriculum should be should be left to the teachers and the administrators in the building and the school board who winds up approving it. You know, since Mike and I have been on this board for the last 20 years, we have worked diligently and worked relentlessly to try to increase student achievement in our school district, and this does not come easy. We have built an AP culture at all of our high schools, which is a pre-kindergarten to 12th grade effort. Our ACT scores continue to go up year after year. The College Board has said, has placed the Millard School District as the AP District Honor Roll. Washington Post listed all three of our high schools as America's most challenging high schools in the country. So I think we have a lot to be proud of in our school district. Our curriculum, curriculum is tied to our assessments, and I think that we do a great job. I think our teachers and administrators do a great job selecting that curriculum that meets both the state and our local, our late, local standards, and it's best left to the people who are closest to it, which would be the teachers in the building. But parents always have the right to opt out if they choose to. We have policy saying that.
Thank you. Candidates, that concludes our question-and-answer period, and we'll go to our one-minute closing statements, starting with Mike Pate.
Great. Thank you, and thank the, the League of Women Voters again for sponsoring this forum. And again, it's very, very important to make sure our, our public is educated on issues. I'd like to certainly reach out to voters and, and say, "Thank you very much for, for trusting me for five terms of, of public service in this position as a member of the Millard School Board. I am seeking my sixth term." I think experience is very, very important today, particularly with all of the issues that we're having to deal with. I believe our, our track record of success in Millard speaks for itself. We are a very, very competent school district, and we're getting what I call, always call the return on our investment, which is student achievement. That's really what we're after. We have high expectations, high expectations promote success, and I think our student achievement results are indicative, indicative of, of the results that we're getting because of the high expectations that we've set. I'm not a single-issue candidate, I'm concerned about all issues, and I would appreciate your vote on November, in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda McGill-Johnson.
Thank you again to the League and for those folks who called in with your wonderful questions here today. When I first decided to run for this office in February, it was really out of a, a love for the Millard School District and out of a sense of civic duty. But my husband and I recently found out we're expecting our first child next year, and so it adds a whole new level of, of my personal investment in wanting to be a part of the district and shaping it for the future. I bring a great deal of legislative and policy experience to the table and would look forward to the opportunity to work with the legislature to try to get back some of that funding that we've lost over the years. In the legislature, I was an advocate for career academies and had introduced legislation to try to help fund those, to make sure that, you know, I'd love to be working to make sure that we get some reimbursement for our teachers with master's degrees that are specific to those areas where we really see a need professionally in our society and jobs that we need to fill, and advanced, advanced machinery and in technology and in nursing, really working with the legislature to try to bring that into Millard.
Thank you. Lynda Poole.
Thank you so much for tuning in tonight and for listening to all of the candidates and their perspectives and their wants for the, for the great Millard School Districts that, that we have. I, like Mike, have been on the school board for 20 years, and I want to thank the community for electing me for the past five elections to, to let me serve in this capacity. It's truly been an honor. When I first decided to run for the school board back in 1995, I did so because, like I said, I wanted to give back to the community that has provided so much for me. Being a student in the district, being able to teach in the district, and being on the board. Now, I have, all three of my daughters are teachers, so education is, is a priority in our family. And I will do all that I can to continue to make sure that the Millard Public Schools is a world-class school district and that we do so at a low per pupil cost. I do believe that leadership and experience matters, and I believe that I bring a unique perspective to this board, being, being a teacher still in a neighboring school district, that I'm able to see things from a variety of different lenses. So I would appreciate your support in November.
Thank you. Amber D. Parker.
Yes, I first want to say thank you to the Millard community for voting me through the primary election to get to the general election, to be here today. I also want to say thank you again to the League of Women Voters and KPao Studios for this opportunity, for this public forum. I do believe that foundation is greatly important, and we need a good, strong foundation to pass the baton to our future generations. And so, I'm running. And a little bit about myself, I am a former DARE speaker and also a children's author, and I just have a heart to see our youth succeed in ways that we haven't and to raise that bar. I do also want to bring attention and sharing that if our school district was to go to all digital media, then we do lose those opt-out privileges, and so to speak, we, we could do that, but that transparency, excuse me, is lost, and we need to keep transparency and accountability. And as a school board member, I would do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all our candidates for participating this evening. The League of Women Voters would like to remind you that we have other forums for you to view upcoming. On August 30th, we'll have Legislative District 7; September 6th, Legislative District 13; on September 13th, Legislative District 31; and on September 20th, Legislative District 39. Then on Monday, September 26th, we will have a live forum for the Omaha Public School, School Board on that date. September 8th, we also have a forum coming up at 7:00 PM in the evening at the Community Engagement Center at UNO. That's a forum on the death penalty. And then in October, October 20th, I believe, the second congressional district debate at the Press Club, that we co-sponsor with the Press Club. So for the League of Women Voters, I'm Jerry Simon, reminding you to inform yourself about the issues and candidates, and on November 8th, Election Day, go vote, Omaha.